Okay, again, as we've had all summer, we're glad to have the junior ROTC cadets from Garfield High School to do our pledge.
Colors, hot. Present, colors.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Here, colors. Ready, cut. Post. Arch. Colors, hot. Present, colors. Post the colors. Ready, down. Right shoulder, arms. Ready, cut. Post. Arch.
Again, they're all people who have been here before, so.
I want to thank them again. They've come all summer and done an outstanding job. Next, we have on agenda is community and school reflections. Anyone?
Just a couple things. Since we've been gone about two weeks. Had an opportunity to attend the African-American Festival audit down at Lot 3 last weekend. Also got a chance to take in a part of the concert for more. For those who don't know more, not that you never know before me, but. No, not so much. Also had an opportunity to meet with a young woman by the name of Marquita Newby and Joyce Fox from Beyond Hope for luncheon out at the. The Holiday Inn on Main Street in Cogga Falls. She was. She comes from a really difficult background, Marquita Newby. But she talks about the importance of financial literacy for our families and to help them get really a handle on their finances so that they could have a better financial future. Just figuring out ways to connect her with other organizations who are working with our families and the public school system. Because I think that's really an important matter to be addressed with our families. I think, not that they're rich, but I think there's opportunities to help them to become more financially stable by understanding money and how to use money. Tended to Taste of Akron, which is always a phenomenal experience to see the varieties of restaurants that we have in our city. And how really how blessed we are. So much we take for granted, but actually we have some wonderful things going on in our city. But what I really wanted to talk about was this last week, over 250 students, young folks from across, I would say, a country, but a significant number from our area participated in YEPAW, Youth Excellence and Performing Arts Workshop. And on Thursday, you know, it's just another opportunity for us to look at our young folks and just see how gifted and wonderful they are and what kind of blessings they bring to others' lives. On Thursday of this past week, they ministered in song at the Haven Arrest to a packed house. And it was, it's just amazing to see how gifted and talented they are. On Sunday, this past Sunday, at EJ Thomas to another packed house. The young folks performed, I mean, I would put their performance on any New York stage or any Hollywood stage. I mean, just tremendously gifted, from learning, the gift of signing, to do drum lines, to dance, to step. Just an amazing group of people. And, you know, this was a YEPAW, I know all of you are familiar with it, but I can never really say enough about it because it's such a positive program. And it does a significant work around building relationships and it does something that we oftentimes, we miss, this intergenerational connection because of the people that come to support our young folks in addition to just the wisdom that they bring. And to be in a safe place for a whole entire week, being loved on is just what the doctor orders. So if you don't know much about YEPAW, I would encourage you to get to know more about that. If you have some extra dollars, like ten, to consider your contributions to that tremendous program. Also walked with New Hope on Sunday with our officer. Saturday morning, they actually told me it was one mile. Only to find I was actually five miles. They said I was totally out of commission for the rest of the day. We kind of lived it on in, but he kind of went all the way. But, you know, so it was a wonderful coordination of the community coming together to support one another. Again, another opportunity for both young and not so young to come together to do something significant for our community. And so that's part of what I did the weekend. If you want more, check me out on WWW. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Just briefly, I was happy and honored to accept a certificate of appreciation for the Akron Public Schools from the Tri-County Employee Assistance Program. And I'll just read it here briefly. They're part of our wellness program, if you will. But in recognition and appreciation for 25 years of partnership with the Akron Public Schools, we thank you for being a visionary in the area of enhancing employee wellness. So, and they actually think we've been a partner for more than 25 years, but that was our best guess anyway. So that was very nice, and I guess we've had a very good partnership with them for obviously 25-plus years.
I just wanted to echo the Taste of Akron and the fine vendors and just the public coming out in a fine manner, sharing in the activities. And then also with YEPAW, there's a young lady that grew up here in Akron. She lives in North Carolina, came home just to participate in YEPAW. So it has that kind of wide range of meaning and emphasis for our young people in the Akron area and now beyond.
Yeah, this is significant, just the significance of reaching back. Leslie Parker Barnes, who is the founder and creative director, graduated from Akron Public Schools, I believe it's North High School.
Viking, yes.
Well, we can't go against her. And I believe Starr Jones, Starr Jones, that's the rich one. Alexandra Starr Wright, also is an Akron Public School alumnus. Just remembering to reach back, I mean, that's so important. And I wanted to mention, I did see Carla at the war concert. She remembered the war, but I didn't.
All right, I'm going to give a report for next meeting. I went to the National School Board Association Council Urban Boards Education Issues Seminar, and they had a number of issues that I want to bring to us, but I want to bring packets for board members and all. And then I'll discuss it at that next board meeting. Anyone else? All right, I don't think we have anyone to request the board or address the board. Communications and recognition, Mr. Lawson and Ms. Ebride.
Believe it or not, about 16 weeks ago, you guys gave us a charge of trying to put together online schools. And what we've learned over the past 16 weeks has been really pretty unbelievable. And so I've asked Marcy, who's been charged with this, who's one of her main responsibilities, to give you a report. Now, she's given me a task over there at the computer. Four things we will test to see if I have the skill set. In fact, Marcy has brought with her some parents and some video kinds of information that we'd like to share with you. Student voices talking about what this program is meant to do. As we walk into our online environment. Marcy, a short shout.
Thank you. What I'm asking back here is like, I'm going to suffer cold in my cell or or mask. So, yeah, we've had an exciting 15 weeks. All sorts of great samplings and offerings we've been able to give some kids. So today I want to share with you what we've done. We have some students and family members here to also sort of testify to what they were able to experience and to give you some ideas about where we'd like to see things move going into the next school year and beyond. Make sure my clicker works from here. You might need to click for me.
That was not part of the puzzle. I would sit next to her.
So as you know, our urban focus is to be the number one urban school system in the nation, which I think is a fantastic focus for us to have. Really grounded in our technologies and our staff. And my clickers. You're going to need to pay attention to. Oh, you gave me the broken one. Thank you. We know that we have a focus area, especially as we talk about these online opportunities for students for high-quality instruction, that we're going to differentiate, meeting them where their needs are at. That we're going to look for the learning conditions that implement unique strategies and initiatives in each of our abilities to enhance their learning conditions. So as we started down this road, we thought about what are the key things that we know we need to discover and find out? We know that we need to figure out how we as APS are going to build a foundation for sustainable online programming. We know that our kids come to us with a variety of backgrounds and needs, and we really want to make sure that what we're setting the foundation for now is something that we can grow into across all the grade levels. We know that the infrastructure needs to be in place that's going to make all of that work, from the technology to the staffing, to the personnel, to the environment that they come into. And we're going to look at what digital delivery methods worked best for our populations. So we had a variety of sort of things we worked through so that we could see where we could improve and what we could build upon that was successful. So let's go back to marking period four. The last nine weeks of school, we launched some online programming for students. And I called these kids my pioneers because they really stepped in as sort of those kids that had to really sort of figure it out, and they provided us with a lot of feedback. They took that responsibility very seriously. Whenever we asked them how things were going, they had no problem speaking up. And they were really great about that. So when I refer to the pioneers, those are all those kids that sort of started out this process with us late in the school year, but were willing to dive in. We partnered with vendors that provided us the K-5 group. We did not do anything in middle school for the pilot period, and a 9-12 group. For K-5, we used a Kiva County ESC, and they gave us Lincoln Interactive software and teachers and technology and all the supports to sort of do a turnkey solution to get that programming up and running. And for 9-12, Virtual Community Schools of Ohio also provided the technology, courseware, mentor models, and online teachers for us to get started. We re-enrolled and we kept students at their local school. So if a student came to the program, they did not go to some separate campus. They were not removed from their local community school. They stayed there and received the services and supports of that school. We felt it was really important that they kept that connection so that they weren't put into some separate location, that it was another option that we were giving kids right at their own schools. Then summertime came, and that gave us even more chances to sort of experiment and branch out into other things we might have not had a chance to try during marking period four. I worked with the summer school planning team, and we kind of took the attitude of, let's just go for it, and we're going to really dig into some of these and try them with our kids. So we expanded virtual credit recovery options from home. They had in the past offered students who scored on a certain pre-test to be able to work from home if they chose to. But this time, we did a screening day where kids could come in right before summer school started, and they took a test, and if they scored 65% or better, they had the option to go work from home on their credit recovery needs. And we had several students show up who took advantage of that, and that really bolstered those numbers, and I'll talk about those numbers on the next slide. We also partnered with a different vendor, EdMento and their EdOptions Academy, who again provided us teachers and online courses for a cohort of students to take a six-week course in either health or economics.
Just a quick question, you said 67%?
65%, if I say 67, the 65% on the pre-test, they were allowed to work from home. Anything lower than that than the summer school team sort of felt that they needed to be in more routinely to have the tutoring and face-to-face services. They were still allowed to come in at any time. If they struggled, the summer school teachers were there and available for them to come in and work with. We also added blended physical science and Algebra I taught by APS teachers. That model was set up on a Monday, Wednesday, or Tuesday, Thursday sort of A-B schedule. If a student signed up for physical science, they were able to come in two days a week, and the other three days, they worked from home. We had two, three weeks, Semester 1 and Semester 2 sessions of those. So some numbers around those. Marking period four, in our K-5 group, even though it was marking period four end of the year, we got about 11 kids, 11 kids who came in, seven of them re-enrolled. In our high school group, we had 43 students total, three who were re-enrolled. Over at summer school, several of our APS online pioneers who had credit recovery needs, so in that group of 43 students, about 13 of them stayed and continued to work with us doing virtual credit recovery. In addition, about 17 more students tested in to be able to work from home. So they've been completing at minimum at two credits recovered from homeless way. No one has only one credit, so it's been two or more. We have 13 students that were in the Firestone cohort that did the 100% online. And we have 55 students that took advantage of the blended courses. So the next slide here is, we asked some students to come in. Some of them actually said, you know, yeah, I'll show up. They won't even hear this summer. They just, they were part of our pioneer group. Some of them were actually at the East High School taking classes. And when they heard we were taping, they volunteered to come down because they really wanted to share with you some of their experiences. So Howard, can you go ahead?
You need to give me control.
You can press the play button. Between the two of us. No, 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 up, 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 play button.
No, I work with people that really try to understand it.
I heard about this program because I was getting kicked out of so many schools. They offered it to me. I like this program because I have flexible schedules, and I was able to graduate really fast. I think this program should stay afloat just because, you know, kids like me, a second chance. It's hard to graduate. People just give up and drop out. If anything else, I would like that, and Ms. Schuler, just a great person. She stayed on my neck and just made sure I graduated.
Hi, I'm Emily Staley. I'm going into the 12th grade at Firestone High School, and I took the online help course. I heard about it through one of our assistant principals, Mrs. Copeland. I thought the class was really easy to access and was like. It was also like, it wasn't a very difficult class. Like, everything was simple to understand, but it was still informative, and I feel like I learned a lot. And the administrators are very on top of. They're very on top of you, so. It's really hard to get behind because there's a lot of calls and emails reminding you not to procrastinate. So it wasn't, it's not, like, the workload isn't challenging, as long as you space it out. I thought, I think it should be, I think it should continue because as well as being easy, it was easy to access and stuff. It was very convenient for me and a lot of other people in my grade because we only have two more semesters to take health. And we, like, I personally don't have the scheduled time, and I don't have a lot of time over the summer either to take the, to take the actual online, like, to take the summer school class. So it was very convenient for me and a lot of other people to have it online.
Hi, my name is Jerome Cave, and I go to the STEM High School in downtown Akron. I heard about the APS online program. When I was with my mom, we were trying to search for some alternatives because I had personal issues that I had to take care of because the traditional summer school, I'd have to go to every day. But I have a lot of other things that I have to take care of during the week, and that includes some things that I have to do at home and also a job I actually have to attend to. I really, I really like the blended learning because it allowed me to work at my own pace and also to have some sense of order because I was given objectives by my teacher to accomplish, and that's what I will work towards. But I could work towards it in ways that suited me and my learning ability. I believe that people would really like this program, and the reason why is because you have a measure of control over what you're learning, but you're also learning what you have to learn in order to pass the course. And I will recommend it to anybody who feels themselves as a self-directed person or as a person who likes to learn with a lack of nerve.
My name is Brittany Jones. I'm a senior at North High School. I heard about the APS online schooling from another student who was also in the program with me. I like the online schooling because the time schedule is flexible, and it's easier for me to come home at night and do my work. When I come home from work and take a shower and everything, it's easier for me to complete my work into a shorter time period. I think that I should continue because I don't want to be in the traditional classroom anymore, and it's easier for me to stay home and do it. Ms. Schuler has helped me with this program, and she has mentored me and pushed me through to do a lot of work that I didn't want to do. And she is still focusing on pushing me through so I can graduate and finish high school and get my diploma instead of a GED, which I don't want. Goodbye.
Hi, I'm Caitlin Stevick. I go to Ella High School. I heard about APS online from my mom. I was trying to figure out what, like, how I can get my credits while having band practices. I liked it because the online learning really helped me. I was able to do it at home, so it fit my busy schedule with band and just having a bunch of other things to do at home. I think I should continue because it helps a lot of band kids. Having the option of doing Mondays and Wednesdays helps because band sectionals are Tuesdays and Thursdays, and they start at 1:00. And I know there are a lot of band kids that still have to come every day because they can't do the blended learning. And they have to miss band, which really sucks because we really, we really hate them. I would recommend keeping it because my teacher, he helped me a lot. He showed me how to do the work, and I was able to do it by myself and made me proud that I could do it when I couldn't do it before. And thank you.
We're going to go forward to one more. Now, the next student, well, he found out we were taping, and he wasn't going to be there for taping day. Came to Ms. Schuler. You keep hearing about Ms. Schuler. I'll introduce her. But he was like, I, you, the board has to hear what I have to say. So he has the voice recorded, but there he is.
My name is William Baxter. I go to Eastern University. I am currently a senior. I was supposed to graduate last year, but I did not because of some issues that I was going through. But the online program, it worked better for me because I was able to work at my own pace. I was able to fit in with my work schedule and be able to do other things that I need to be done. I feel like the summer school program worked better too because I was able to come up here every day. Any day I wanted to except for Mondays. Because, no, I had to work on Mondays, but I came up here any other day. Ms. Schuler was always up here. I feel like she always helped me. She always called me. And I feel like we should start the, what's the program called? The online program earlier than normal school would start because I work 10:00 to 7:00, and it would be hard for me to go to work at night and then just come straight to school at 7:00 in the morning or 8:00 in the morning, whichever time school starts, and just be able to go through the whole day off of whatever hours of sleep I got before I went to work. So I feel like we should start this before school starts so we can. And we will get done way quicker because I work at a steady pace, and if we will start this, say, in the middle of August, I will be done by September. So please consider rolling me in keeping the APS online program overrun. Thank you.
I love that he says I would work outside the school day and outside the school year. This would work for him. I'll start school early. Start me in, you know, start me in August. It's okay. This was a quote from Austin. I just wanted to include it. Early on, we received this as he was getting into his classes. And we got all emotional because it was one of our first, like, I love this thing. So I just wanted to share with you, you know, him feeling safe and grateful and that this was better for him. We also have two live students who had decided to come and visit with us tonight. Kristen Myrick's a Firestone student. She's in 12th grade this year. She did virtual credit recovery from home this summer school. And Natasha Smith, she was one of our APS online pioneers that started with us marking period four, also a senior. And she also stayed this summer and continued some virtual credit recovery as she worked from home. So if I could ask these ladies to stand, and Kristen has some things she'd like to share with you.
Hello, my name is Kristen Myrick. I attend Firestone High School, and I will be a senior this fall. What I liked about the computer-based credit recovery program was that it enabled me to work at my own pace. I found out about it on the brochure for summer school. I took two classes on the program, which were biology and history. While using the program, I liked how I didn't feel anxious about not keeping up with everyone else or feeling worse if everyone else in the class understood the idea except for me. Working on the computer felt good, and I enjoyed being able to do great when and if I needed to. I really liked how I could work on the computer and Ms. Schuler was there to help us. Although the program was individualized, it was a great, it was great to have help from a teacher. Ms. Schuler made the process feel like it was going faster, and it made me personally feel much better about having to do it. She always has a bright attitude about things and had a big smile on her face. Her energy made me feel good. She also brought snacks, which made me want to come in. I am grateful to have had the opportunity to take these online courses. I was able to finish in time to have the rest of my summer back. I was able to attend the Youth Excellence Performing Arts Workshop, where I lost my voice, but had a great time. I would totally recommend this program to another student, especially if that other student wants to be involved in other things in life. The combination of working alone on the computer and the help of a mentor makes this a perfect program. Thank you. Thank you.
My name is Natasha Smith. I was introduced to this program by my counselor, Mrs. Gordon at Rockford High School. What I like about this program is I can work at my own pace. I can get a lot more done in one day than I could in a classroom. In a classroom, you only get 50 minutes to work a day and half the time the teachers can spot you. Then you have students distracting you, so you don't really get that much done. But with this program, you can get a week's worth done really fast. You can get a whole class done in one week if you really determine to do it. I also like how Ms. Schuler is on your custom to get your work done. She will make sure that you graduate. This program fits me because I came to this program in March and I was pregnant. I wasn't, I was on the verge of not graduating, but now it fits my schedule. I can do a lot more than I would have been able to in a classroom at the building. I personally don't have money for a babysitter or anything like that, so it helps me be able to take care of my son and be able to graduate. I would recommend this program because there is a lot of people who have made mistakes and fell behind and they feel like they wouldn't be able to graduate at their homeschool or at total path or digital. I feel like this program beats all of that and it is guaranteed to get you back on your path. I know that because I fell behind. I was able to get four credit recovery classes done in the past month and I'm on my fifth one that I'm about to finish. I felt like I was not going to be able to graduate and I was really worried before I was introduced to this program because I felt like I was going to fail my son and he was going to grow up to see me as somebody who gave up and I didn't want that. I wanted him to be proud of his parents. Now that I'm in it, I can say that I can do it and I believe in myself again. I know that I will be able to graduate. I feel like this program is good for anybody who has fell behind, anybody who can't focus in a classroom and teen moms especially. This program has given me hope when everything else failed, so I hope you continue. Thank you.
We're very proud of both of these ladies. Natasha, when she was going to come do credit recovery this summer, I had talked to her and her mom on the phone and she's like, I don't want to do all those credit recoveries. And then next thing I know, she's on her fifth class. So we were very proud of her. She's done a fantastic, thank you girls for talking to me. And I would also like Ms. Myricks, Kristen's mom is here and she wanted to share some, what it's done for her as well.
Well, I prepared a reading, but I'm not going to read. I think you've heard exactly what I was going to say as I represented both my daughter and my son, who took a couple of, three classes altogether between the two of them this summer in credit recovery. And both of them enjoyed it very much, the ability to go at their own pace, the ability to focus, the ability to not have the distractions of the kids who really weren't as prepared to learn and willing to learn as cooperatively as they were. But let me say this, I think what this program reflects is that I am extremely proud of Akron Public Schools for is its sensitivity to two things. First, the kids aren't all made the same. How many of us have children? Put your hands. How many of us have more than one kid? So how many of us know that not one single kid is like any other, even when they're born from the same two parents? They have different needs, they have different approaches to learning, they have different styles and paces. And I really appreciate that Akron Public Schools is sensitized to that and says, you know, it's not cookie cutter. We're not throwing all kids into one process and demanding that they all be successful. Given that one process, we're going to diversify and we're going to think of other ways to do it. And I think that the proof has been in the pudding of, in what you've heard the students say. The second thing is I'm really proud of Akron Public Schools for looking at failure differently. You know, so many times we look at failure and it's just about, well, you know what, this kid couldn't grasp the topic. That's not always the root of failure. Failure can come from illnesses, it can come from lack of comfort in a social environment in school. It can come from family problems, it can come from health, it, all kinds of roots of challenges that kids have in school. And this program seems to say, you know what, if it's a mom who's had a kid in, you know, during their high school years, or if it's a kid who has to work to help support a family, no matter what the issues are, having options for students is the key. So I'm really, really proud about that. And let me say this one last thing. From 1985 to 1991, I taught at the Teenage Parents Center here for the Akron School Board, or Board of Education. And I lived with kids like Natasha, up close and personal. And I can remember Cindy packets home when the girls delivered, stacked books, making sure the book bags were packed, making sure the papers were all in there, making sure they got all the papers back. It was a hassle. And I always felt guilty loading this kid up with all this crap when she had a newborn coming in. I'm not saying don't stop the educational process, but this reflects a sensitivity using the technology that we didn't have 30 years ago, but saying, you know what, don't worry about the books, don't worry about the papers, follow the online course, you're not going to lose anything on the, on the computer. And you'll be able to trace your mastery. The kids got in the car and every day they said, I'm at 65%, I'm at 85%, I'm at 90%. So they were tuned in to what their skills were as they were increasing. So good job, Akron Public Schools. I'm proud of you guys. Thank you for giving my kids this opportunity and go team.
Excellent, thank you very much. Okay, so as Ms. Myricks so eloquently said, it is not a one-size-fits-all solution. We know that just simply putting the kids in front of a computer and hoping for the best is not it, that we know that we deserve to give, our kids deserve something better than what they may be getting from other online schooling. When we come to us, we need to really be individualized and look at that student to see where their needs were, the mentorship levels and the different sort of classes and things that we need to make sure we're addressing with them. We need to know that there's flexibility in their homeschool. I've had lots of parents and students express that I'd like to do the online program, I'd like to come back, can I take advantage of other things that are going on in the school? Can I take a music class? Can I take a band class? Can I take some career and technical classes? And all of those opportunities, as we're enrolling them, are the flexibility that we're going to look for at our schools. We know that our stewardship is key, that we're paying attention to them, that it's not just, Darling's been a fantastic mentor, but it's everybody who touches all of our kids is making sure that they're being just as successful. And that we have dependable technology in front of them because if they can't get to it, it doesn't really help, does it? So we need the right devices in front of them to make that work. And that it's the staff that makes the difference, even though it's digital. And I know you keep hearing about Ms. Schuler, like she's famous now, so I'm going to, I asked her to be there tonight because she's been with me since March and we've met weekly at, every week to sort of debrief and plan and strategize and improve upon what we were experiencing with the kids in the field. And she, I asked her to come here to share some of what her mentorship role looked like because when we started, she asked me, well, what have I got to do? I said, I want you to love on the kids and wrap your arms around them and make them feel like they can do this. And then from there, she just sort of flew. So Ms. Schuler.
Well, I am Ms. Schuler and I am the one that has the snacks all the time. Every morning, we have, I have a variety of things for the kids, but for me, I'm a huge advocate for education, being a graduate of Akron Public Schools myself in 1988 from Central Howard High School. And just moving on and going on to college and then working 12 years in higher education as a diversity recruiter, I see the importance of education. So when I came aboard to do this pilot program, one thing that I wanted to instill in every kid that I came across is failure is not an option with me. You can't tell me you can't do it. What do I have to do to make this process easier for you? And there's a technique that we used to do and we still would do it at higher ed, it's called intrusive academic advising. And it's a skill set, not so much to intrude, but it helped us to find all specific things about kids, with students, adults that we would work with and particularly their goals. So one thing I did with every student that I met in this mentor program, I created an academic log sheet. And on that log sheet, I gave them three goals that we had to work towards when we started the program. So that when they would fall off track, I would pull out that sheet and say, now this is what we talked about in March. Where have we gone wrong on this process? Maybe this, maybe what you're doing now, the time you're spending online is not working. So now Ms. Schuler's going to have to bug you. I need your cell phone number. So I would call the students, I would text the students, because a lot of kids would check their emails because they say, I don't have time to check my email. Well, if I don't yet, I'm going to do one better with your cell phone number. But I made myself available to the students and the parents pretty much on a 24-hour basis because I had one girl, she had some sleeping problems where she did most of her work from 12 o'clock to like 6 o'clock in the morning. So I would get text messages from her at like 5:00 in the morning. And consequently, I would answer her because I get up at 5:30 in the morning. So she was like, you're up? I'm like, uh, yeah, you did text me. So I would respond to help her with her issues, but I think the key thing as the mentor is it's not that traditional seven to three, Monday through Friday. If you're going to help a child achieve their goal and make sure they're getting what they need, it's Monday through Sunday. And I would stop if I was doing something out with my friends, if a student would text me, if a parent would call me, I'd say, excuse me for just a second, I need to help this student. And if I could do it from my phone and fix the problem, I would fix it or I would send Marcy a text message. So I think that for me, I didn't see this as a hard task, I just seen it as something that I love to do. And I want these students to see that coming from a higher ed background and wanting to see kids go to college or do technical education, whatever it is, their vocation, whatever their dream is, I want to be a part of that to help them succeed at that dream. No, college is not for every student, but there's a vocational program, there's something out there that can prepare them. But I try to instill in them that your high school diploma is a must when you're working with me. We don't want to talk about GED, it's a high school diploma. And I'm going to help you get there by any means, as long as you stay the course and you show me that that's what you want to do, I'll make every effort. Any of the principals, it was important for me to build relationships with the building principals, staff, my face in the building or in their offices, hey, I'm Darlene Schuler, I work with the students, can you help me out with something? Because they needed to see my face because I'm working with their student. So students can come and tell me, oh, Ms. Schuler, I can't do that because I don't have that. No sweetheart, I'm going to make sure you have that and I'm going to have the food in the room and I'm going to have the technology for you to do that. So again, this is an excellent program. I strongly encourage the board to look into this to see that we can have something like this for every student or at least for the school district. Thank you.
Kristen, do we have to bottle your energy? I wouldn't know how, I mean, I would guarantee success. Darlene knows no strangers. And if she does, she doesn't know the strangers for long. She makes everybody an instant friend and ally and like you've known her for years.
This is not a doom. I, I think this is grand, this is beautiful, but the thing that stuck out with me and maybe can help me was the 65% because for the very reasons that Sister Myricks mentioned about the challenges and all the things that pull our young folks, 65% at home on a computer troubles me. And so, you know, there was something about them not knowing, they, I know, I think you're the, you're the variable that's probably really key to what's happening and how do we, and, and I know Brother Chuck is here and Sister Sherry's there, so there's that support. So I was, my concern would be that 65% and not having those supports at home.
Can I speak to that? Kristen started going every day and then when she took one of the classes, she took the test to see if she could work from home. So she passed that 65%. I was worried as a parent, my husband's a witness, thinking, okay, if she's not going into East every day where Ms. Darlene has been with her, she's going, the motivation's going to go away, the discipline is not going to be there. Chrissy stayed on it all the way through. Ms. Darlene had told her, if you need me, I'm a phone call away. Chris knew that and worked, I was so impressed, she worked diligently. So the 65% mastery level for then doing that at home, whereas I had a concern, did not turn out to be a problem. Did that help at all? That was my experience.
It does theoretically because there's a built-in support that I'm aware of that Chrissy had, so to speak. So I'm talking about the other ones who don't have that. And I, again, I'm saying that's the key piece, but that was just my concern, maybe it's not a question we can answer here, but that just seems like.
Too low.
It did to me, I don't know about, maybe, you know, kind of.
Just to, so just briefly, the 65%, that would leave 45% of the knowledge of the course the kids didn't know. So the tutorials would exempt them from anything they knew already. So they were able to jump into tutorials only on content that they did not answer on the pre-test correctly. So the tutorials gave them mastery tests, little gauges along the way, and we had, everybody was progress monitoring them. And we'd call and check in on them. If we saw them start to struggle, we advised them to come in and meet with a tutor or work face to face. So we watched daily their progress. They weren't in any means left alone or struggling on their own. If we saw that lag behind, we run them in. So thinking forward in the 15, 16, some places we'd like to go or expand or try is really looking at that foundation. So earlier we talked about finding out the foundation, how we can grow, making sure the infrastructure's in place and that delivery method that we're giving the kids is our best product that we can put in front of them. So we would like to really expand target enrollments K through 12 for our home and online digital competitors that are out there. So really sort of go after those kids that I feel are in some subpar environments that we can bring back, not, you know, maybe our homeschoolers, but to certainly offer them an APS curriculum and resources for them to use and to get those online kiddos back. So we'd like to move target enrollments there for this year. We would like to make sure more people like Darlene are on staff to work with our kids that can keep that momentum going, to keep paying attention to them, that keep them connected to the school. We would like to see throughout the year where we, right now, we're sort of, you know, buying these teachers through the academies or the online programming, but I got to believe that our APS staff knows our kids, knows our buildings, knows our strategies, knows our goals. And we need to start migrating in that direction where they start to pick up some of these courses that we can build upon, expand, get an area of expertise right in-house that are teachers here in Akron. And expand some of our course offerings digitally to AP, foreign language, so that we can offer some of these robust course offerings to our students. That we look at our infrastructure, especially our technologies, and we move those in-house. Both of the vendors that we used for the pilot period, we experienced a lot of technology issues. And if I had to sort of identify as a technology person, sort of when big, stubborn wind block the kids ran into was the types of devices that they were sort of letting us use. There was a turnaround, there was always shipping and I have to feel like we can support kids better through that process. And that we're utilizing existing systems that are already in place, our registration systems, our counseling, our student information system, all of those great practices that we already have to support our kids are what we continue to leverage. And that we look at our delivery, we continue with the K5 Lincoln Interactive that we used for the pilot, for the targeted homeschool population to continue to offer them, here's your teacher, courseware, materials and technology, parents. And then to switch to the Ed Options Academy teachers for the 612 delivery. We're familiar with Ed Options and their plate of courseware because that is something we've been using for eight years now in the district, at least 10, maybe. It's something our teachers are very familiar with, the systems we're very familiar with. It's a quality online courseware that we've already vetted and used and we know works well for our kids. Are there any other questions that we can answer at this time?
Question and comment. First of all, I,
First of all, two things that really came, I'm listening to this, this presentation, is the kids saying that they were able to work at their own pace, and I think that's real important. Because as a, look at myself, as an ex-student, I needed to work at their pace like they did, and I think I would've been even better and would've learned more, but you have those time restraints, sometimes that hurt. And the second is Mrs. Schuler, and having someone like Mrs. Schuler dedicated to work with our students to make sure that they're gonna succeed, and that failing is no option. And my, I guess I have two questions. One, first question, if the kids do not have computers at home, we provide computers for them, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. If they have computers at home, would you still provide them for them as well, or do they do their own computer?
We asked the kids who came for virtual credit recovery and the qualifiers, because we didn't have a whole wealth of devices to do the summer school programming, that one of the qualifiers was that they had a computer at home. For our APS pioneers that sort of returned, we found a set, we only had 13 kids came to come back, and we knew that they needed technology. As I've been talking with parents, some of them have said, "I have my own computer, I just use it." But I do believe that we would need our own base of technology to put on loan to the students as long as they're enrolled in the online full-time program.
And my other question, this is not gonna take place of, I guess, charter school type situation, but it will help keep our kids in Akron Public Schools that remain there, or even capture some of the other students who left to come back to Akron Public Schools.
Correct. I think our broad goal from the very beginning was sort of that recapture and keep, right? We don't wanna keep losing kids, and we wanna bring back students with this as an offering or an option for them. Correct? Those are our big targets.
We've got 4,000 kids that are doing community schools or online, just those two things right now, that are Akron, that live in Akron Public Schools. That's 4,000. Okay. Our target this year...
Targets enrollment for this year, 350.
That's where we'd like to go with it.
So, what number of that 3,000, that 4,000 he was talking about is actually online learning?
I was bringing the numbers today, about, probably about 1,300 of them, K through 12, that are doing some sort of online learning. And about another 250 to 300 that were the homeschool population. There are some sort of online learning.
A couple of different questions. Earlier on, you talked, you gave us some re-enrollment numbers, now what exactly did that mean? They're enrolled for the fall?
Oh, they were kids that, when we launched the pilot, heard about it, and their parents called from out of district and said, "I wanna bring this student back to take advantage of it for marking period four." And they just did marking period four, that was it. I hope I'm trying to keep them for this fall too, but that was, they knew coming in, it was a pilot time, but they wanted to come back and try with us.
Okay, so they had left, they came back specifically for the fourth quarter.
One parent told me, "I would've never have left if you would've had us when I took my kid out."
Awesome. You also said another goal was go K through 12, so is, is there a third partner you're looking at for that gap that we did new on the fourth quarter then? Or is that, is that a long-term goal, not one for this fall?
Play-Doh will fill the void from 6 through 12.
Okay, so it'll drop down to where K through 5, okay.
It, it, it will support that. And our middle school will go a little slower as we develop, develop some of the elementary and some of the high school, will do some of the learning curve. We've learned a lot. It's unbelievable what we've learned about our infrastructure, about the abilities that our kids have, about the technology we can give them that they can use. It's been a wonderful experience, and she's championed it very well.
And just here, so we've, we've used this sixth grade through 12th grade vendor for about 10 years, so in what manner, it wasn't online learning?
I also, I can speak to that, because I wound up doing it with Career Tech when I used to have, where that had. And what I figured at that time, when we started to investigate, is that we could not allow kids, young people, to fail courses if they were going to be able to take advantage of some of the skill training we were offering. So, we pioneered the kind of credit recovery piece through Play-Doh. And that then took off in a variety of different ways. Number one, it became, in some, I venture to say, we have about 200-plus staff trained in Play-Doh at this point in time. It became part of their regular instruction, some of them, especially the CBI, Courteous Intervention, all right, that became part of their regular instruction, a way to help deliver that. It became supplemental to, to students that needed some additional help. We used it in C-Tag to try and recapture a credit before it was lost, okay? If there was some power standards, I'm gonna use that term, because that's my career tech and background. If there were power standards that we really felt that Algebra I had to have, with the support of the Algebra I curriculum specialist, they said, "All right, if they get this standard, this, this, this concept, and they master that, then we can move them on." And we've tried to blend a variety of things in that 10 or 12 years.
Yeah, just, and a comment, I, I love what this is doing here, because not only credit recovery, but we heard from the one girl taking health, because it matches with margin band, and I liked also the other part, the other side of it, where kids can start taking AP courses, so they can start maybe taking that particular at school that we can't take.
One of the real ahas to me about three years ago was, happened on July 4th, okay? When the kids logged on on the evening of July 4th, at 10 o'clock at night, you know, when the fireworks are going, they logged on on July 4th, we, I've got a log, I've got a printout of their progress. And this one guy, actually on the 5th of July, logged in at 1:00 a.m. and worked till about 3:00 or 4:00. That's when I knew that, you know, it's got, this is something we have to explore, because that's when they wanted to learn.
That's an excellent point. Natasha did all of her course, and then finished up credit recovery, so it's, it's been an amazing experience for the kids.
Now you know why I didn't do any speaking. Can't beat my basement.
It's on the retention, the re, they re-rolled, is that a retention possibility, the seven? Or no?
Yes, the seven in elementary. One parent moved to...
But the other six?
Here we go.
One of the other neat things that she didn't talk about is, we actually had kids graduate that weren't going to graduate through this process. So, very short period of time and a whole lot of neat things to tell you. Couple of neat graduations that were grounded from this work, it's really, you know, the homeworks, if you, if I can use that as a...
Thank you.
Okay, we'd like to thank Mr. Lawson and Ms. Ebride for the presentation, also the guests that came, thank you, and students for your, your comments about the program. Okay, so we will continue to move on, we need approval for meeting minutes from July 13th, 2015.
Second.
It's been moved to second. Roco?
Mr. Hodge?
Uh, staying due to absence.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mrs. Sims?
Yes.
Reverend Walker?
Yes.
Yes. Superintendent, recommendations?
Mr. President, I have before me for your consideration 56 personnel recommendations. I also like to note on item 17, the start date should be listed as July 1st of 2015. Other than that, these recommendations are in proper form, and I move their approval.
So moved, second. Removed in second. Question? Roco?
Hodge?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mrs. Sims?
Yes, it contains the item 56.
Reverend Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
And at this time, I'll have Kathy McVeigh do an introduction.
Glad to have Miss Ann Hansen. Please stand, please. Ann is a graduate of Stowe Rock Falls High School. She received her bachelor's degree in political science from Kent State University in December 2002, and then earned a master's degree in applied politics from Akron. In 2005, she became the distance learning coordinator for the Bliss Institute of Applied Politics at Akron. And in this position, she developed a marketing strategy, recruiting students from the Columbus area for the distance learning courses. Miss Hansen developed relationships and agreements with other Ohio universities and planned a variety of programs, including academic forums, press conferences, speakers, receptions, and alumni events. In 2007, she became an academic advisor in the Department of Political Science at the University of Akron. And while in this position, she advised over 600 students in the pursuit of their careers, assisted the faculty in the development of coursework, and served as a liaison between academic departments. 2012, she was appointed as the manager of continuing education and outreach of the National Center for Education and Research on Corrosion and Materials Performance at the University of Akron. As the manager, she worked with high school and middle school faculty to develop interest in the corrosion engineering program, and was in charge of recruitment efforts and industrial relationships in North and South America, Australia, and Europe. She also recruited faculty and outside experts to develop course materials and implemented scholarships and co-op placements. Tonight, she's recommended for the position of the STEM, STEM hub programmer, program manager. Congratulations. Thank you very much. Thank you for welcoming me to the team of this one.
All right. Next, Mr. President, I have before me for your consideration four motions and 11 resolutions on the consent agenda, and one resolution in the board letter supplement. These recommendations are in proper form, and I move their approval.
So moved, second.
Moved to second, any questions? No questions, Roco?
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mrs. Sims?
Yes.
Reverend Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Hodge?
Yes.
And finally, Mr. President, I have before me for your consideration 51 business affairs recommendations. These recommendations are in proper form, and I move their approval.
So moved, second.
Removed to second, any question? Roco?
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mrs. Sims?
Yes.
Reverend Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mr. Hodge?
Yes.
Superintendent, report?
Actually, very timely, I wanted to report, Mr. President, that last week, I spent some time at the New Tech Network Conference in Chicago with our staff from Buckto CLC. Saw and heard a lot of exciting things. I was glad to see our teachers and our interim principal engaged in the process, but a lot of what I heard touched on exactly what we were talking about here today. And really, what depths are we gonna go to to differentiate for our students so that they're all successful? And really, you all should give yourselves a hand, because you're the ones who really pressed us to come up with new and creative ways of educating our kids. And so, I think we're on the right track, based on what we heard this evening.
Good stuff. Okay, no presidents report this evening, treasures report?
Quick treasures report, pleased to present, June, our final month fiscal year report, almost the end of my first year, I'm pleased to present that through that process and reconciling cash in the bank, almost $130 million, that your finance office staff reconciled to the penny every month that I was here. It's a pretty amazing accomplishments, there were no material adjustments, there were no write-offs, those were reconciliations to penny, and even had some staff change there. I'm really blessed and proud to be a part of that team. I'd like to highlight for you page nine, and some comments that I've given you in the board over the past few months, maybe a chance to make it. Page nine talks about the month of June, actual expenditures compared to my estimates. We've talked about this dilemma in receiving information from the Ohio Department of Education, and truly, it's reflected here in this line item. Over the last two months, so May and June, there's a $3.1 million adjustment based on our community school data enrollment. And how that impact packs us is directly to our checkbook. So, that, that's them going in, reaching into our checkbook, and pulling that money out in two months. So, the result of that is actually something that was driving what we asked for your approval, I think, the end of business affairs recommendations, was that we really work as a team to capture that data in its raw form before it's submitted to ODE, so that we can use it as management tools and be more responsive and nimble to that data. Instead of waiting on ODE, last year, they returned it in March. In 2013, they returned that data to us in January. This year, it was May and June. So, these are, this is data that starts the school year, that's returned at the end. That's just completely unacceptable for management to review. So, we had a question from one of the board members that highlighted that, so page nine is really where you see the impact. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay, we'll move on to community reports, finance, instructional policy.
No, just thank you guys for your support.
Okay. Legal?
Need me to read this?
I'll read it then, I'll give you a break. We have for the second reading of 2015 Rules and Regulation for the Board of Education Revised, that's the second reading. And we have for the third and final reading, policy 5136 for personal communication devices. And I'd like to ask if we could, uh, move, move?
Second.
Second, move to second. Any question? No questions, Roco?
Mrs. Sims?
Yes.
Reverend Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mr. Hodge?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Any unfinished business? New business? I told, we have no executive session tonight, is that correct? Okay? So, in remission to adjourn. So moved?
Second.
Moved in second? Any questions before we adjourn? Roco?
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mr. Hodge?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mrs. Sims?
Yes.
Reverend?
Yes.
Thanks, everyone. Have a great one.